Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Sierra County Commission meeting, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. It's a packed house. It's good to see you folks. I'm sure that some of you are gonna give comment during our public hearings, but welcome all. If you will silence your phones so that an inerret rain doesn't disturb the meeting. And we'll get busy with the meeting. So Deputy Clerk Theresa, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Paxton.
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Also in attendance is County Manager Vaughn and County Attorney Pato.
Thank you, Theresa. I'd like to welcome Sandy Jones, appointed to the Commission vacancy after Travis Day resigned to take a USDA appointment in Albuquerque. Sandy, we're glad to have you. We're full commission now. Would you lead us into place this morning?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, which is the symbol of perfect conscience among American citizens.
We have a full house. I don't have any guests listed. We will hear from a lot of folks regarding the public hearing. But is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Vice Chair, move to rechange item twelve B, Resolution twenty twenty five by saying you want a formative chair and vice chair after public comment. And if that change, I mean, we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Move then seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved. Gentlemen, you have the approval of regular meeting October twenty first and the special meeting November fourteenth. If you've had time to review those minutes, if there's any discussion.
Mr. Vice Chair, move to per minute.
For both meetings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it, although I wasn't in attendance, so I probably won't.
That's fine. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. We will go to the public hearing. We have three items. The first is ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero five, amendment, and restating Sierra County Solid Waste Ordinance twenty three dash oh two. Attorney Pato.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I might defer initially at least to the sheriff on this item since he's willing to present these proposed changes.
Okay. Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, sir. So this all came from complaints from constituents throughout the county of some residences within the county that have an accumulation of household trash and waste that's blowing not only on their neighbor's property, but then also onto public lands. We've got a few residences within the county that have been a reoccurring problem. We've issued what limited citations we can under state law and haven't got any resolved. And in talking to those constituents, we were looking to resolve this matter. And talking to Attorney Pato, the way our ordinance was originally written, though there was mention of household waste and garbage and refuse, there was no enforcement leg in our ordinance to address it. And so what I ask Attorney Pato to do, and what we've done in this, is cleaned up the definitions a little bit. There was a lot of things in the definitions on the ordinances that were never mentioned in the actual ordinance itself or enforcement part of this ordinance. And we cleaned that up and we've added the, basically, the household trash and garbage to the ordinance so that we can now enforce that whenever it's blowing onto neighbor's property or on a public land. Good.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add briefly to that. So the definitions of household waste and refuse are now expressly tied to the state law terminology, replacing the undefined or inconsistent terms previously incorporated within that solid waste ordinance. And now the definitions of solid waste exclusions track the statutory provision seventy nine, seventy four ninety three. So it was a pretty simple cleanup. We didn't otherwise attack or revise the provisions of the solid waste ordinance to intend in this amendment and restatement of the ordinance simply to give effect to what the sheriff was discussing and ensure for enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the trash ordinance? If you will, approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andy Underwood. Public, good morning. I live on County Road eight double oh seven, and what the sheriff was just talking about affects us heavily. We've got household garbage blowing across the road in several locations. Where we live, we have access to a trash service. It costs about forty bucks a month to have this company come and pick up your waste. Some people just can't afford that. So we have blowing garbage. We also have a problem with abandoned vehicles. These properties where we have the problem with blowing garbage, some of them may have fifteen to twenty abandoned cars. I was hoping maybe this ordinance could set a limit on how many cars you could have in your yard. I don't know. You know, maybe there's a way to, for the county to figure out a way to recycle these cars. You know, have a contract with somebody that is in the business or take some steps forward to get us into that position where we can recycle cars. Somehow, we need to try and keep our county clean. You know, people who live out in the country, we have a tendency to have little stockpiles of stuff, but there should be a limit to how many cars you have. And there should be a way for these people to get rid of their cars. You know, if they can't afford to pay forty bucks to go to the garbage service, they certainly can't afford to get rid of their cars. So I'm hoping that you guys can figure out some way to take care of that as part of this issue. And thank you all for considering it.
Thank you, Andy. Thanks, Andy.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, and as the board in adopting the original solid waste ordinance, that's a concern, number one, about zoning generally and getting into that space of telling people what they can and cannot do on their property. And that has to be balanced against public safety and public health. One of the concerns I remember discussed at that meeting was one person's junk is another person's treasure. And so who's going to be making these determinations as to whether or not that car that's sitting on someone's spot is junk or treasure? So I remember that that was part of this board's consideration in adopting the original ordinance, and that was part of the sausage making that went into that. So I just wonder if you're that, that recognition.
Thank you, Attorney Pato. Anybody else from the public? Please approach the podium and state your name, please, although we know you.
Hi, my name is Jackie Stockman, and I live at seventeen Hazel Nut Road, which is off of Lower Chacillo Creek. My first appearance here before the Commission on this subject was February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty two. I brought the attention to you folks what was going on on Lower Chacillo Creek Road. And what has happened in those three years and eight months? The situation has got about a thousand percent worse, and they probably have enough citations to pay for a bathroom if they used it. The situation is unbearable along that road. We're not only dealing with trucks that have been, pickup trucks that have been pulled in, loaded with trash, and they're sitting there. Now, one man's treasure is another man's junk? That's junk. I don't care who you talk to. That is junk. Where are they getting their facilities from? Where are they going to the bathroom? What are they doing with all of their physical waste? That is a health problem to the community. We all have wells out here. We draw probably on the same aquifer. And I think it's about time that we went beyond this solid waste. Trash running all over the place is one thing. A health issue is totally different. And I don't know where the health department is in this community or this state, but we need to get involved with it. We need to clean up this mess. There's three locations along there. What was initially two, now there are three because one was split into two. I mean, we are paying taxpayers in this community and not small amounts. Why do we have to put up with this crap? And that's what it is, is crap. And Jim, you know, I have been on this case for three years because I have called you on multiple occasions.
Yes, ma'am.
Josh was out to the house to initiate this procedure to modify the solid waste program. Just modifying it isn't enough. We gotta clean, we should have been in bulldozers and haul this stuff away. We have trailers that have been pulled in there. People are living in those trailers. They're adding on little additions to put their crap in, which is still all over the yard, blows all over the place. It's disgusting. It's a pigsty. Why do we have to put up with it? That's all I can say. You guys got your work cut out for you. Okay?
Anybody else regarding this ordinance? Going once? You want to try us here at none? We'll go on to the next ordinance for our public hearing. As a note, we take notes in these hearings, but we don't typically respond to public comment. And we appreciate everybody that comes and speaks to us, and we'll take those things into consideration. The second ordinance is twenty twenty five dash zero zero six, road infrastructure placement ordinance. Attorney Pato.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start this one off, and then I'll turn it over to the sheriff, since this came from the sheriff's request. So this drone ordinance regulates unmanned aircraft system activity.
Road, road.
Oh, I apologize. Totally spused. I had the wrong one in my notes.
Want coffee?
Yes, please. So the Road Department Infrastructure Placement Ordinance authorizes the County Road Superintendent to regulate and permit placement of utilities and other infrastructure on, under, or across county roads. It establishes mandatory permit conditions, requires bonding or deposits, outlines applicant obligations for prepared strip roadways, ensures safety measures during construction, and provides enforcement and appeals procedures. The ordinance protects the county's ability to maintain its road system and ensures infrastructure placement does not endanger the public or impair roadway integrity. And these applications that are included as part of that ordinance would be provided to applicants. They would complete that, submit their application fee, it'd be reviewed by our County Road Superintendent, and then approved or denied those requests.
Manager Vaughn, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding the road infrastructure? Any public comment regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero six, the road infrastructure placement ordinance? Hearing none, we'll close this section and go on to the next item. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven is for regulating unmanned aircraft systems, known as drones, on county property. Attorney Pato and Sheriff, come on up.
So, Mr. Chairman, just really quickly. This ordinance regulates unmanned aircraft system activity on county property and for public purposes, public safety purposes, while respecting FAA preemption over airspace and flight operations. It prohibits, it prohibits unpermitted takeoffs and landings on county property, bans drone use that invades privacy, harasses individuals, interferes with first responders for wildlife protection, or facilitates criminal activity, and establishes penalties for violations. The ordinance ensures that county regulations tie to land use, privacy, nuisance, and safety without encroaching on federal aviation authority. And again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, it's narrowly tailored to try to accomplish, you know, that very fine line between infringing on FAA regulations and where we can permit some sort of regulation, like taking off on county property, landing on county property, and the use of drones for harassment and other illegal and nefarious purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Pato. Sheriff.
Commissioners, thank you. So again, I go with Attorney Pato on this ordinance based on situations we're facing within the county. Just a quick recap. I know Commissioner Jones wasn't here before. So we've had several incidents where people are utilizing drones, most frequently in neighbor disputes, both flying them within ten to fifteen feet of their neighbor's head while they're out on their own property. We've had an instance where a drone was flown quite a distance and then down into the courtyard of the residence, looking in the windows. And these sorts of instances where the community's complaining. And unfortunately, drones are kind of like the internet. Our state legislature and even our federal legislature hasn't caught up with, with the technology as it's growing. And so this is an attempt to at least stop these instances where people are utilizing drones to harass other people or to look in windows of private residences and things like that. It's to ensure some privacy and stop some harassment and also provide safety. With the drone up in the air, you know, you have a three pound object falling a hundred feet out of the sky and landing on somebody. That's going to be catastrophic. So we're just trying to get ahead of this as we're dealing with these instances and these incidents across the county and put some measures in place to deal with the issue.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have any public comment regarding the drone ordinance? And I apologize. We have no public comment, so we will close the public hearing. And we will go on to public comment. Jackie and Andy, I've got you on the public comment. Did you have additional, anything to discuss? Come on up, Andy.
I don't get a lot of screen time, so I'm gonna come.
Well, it's good to see you. It's been a while.
So, public attorney.
Andy, state your name and microphone, please. We're recording.
Yeah, I got my hearing aids on. Well, I can't hear. So back to the issue of the garbage and wrecked cars and stuff. You know, I'm just gonna repeat what I said before, but I think we need to figure out a way for people that don't have the financial means to be able to clean up their property, and they're gonna need help from the government to do that. I don't know that we should be trying to penalize them as much as we should be trying to figure out solutions for them because this isn't gonna go away. So as Jackie was saying, we've had to call the people in charge of septic tanks, the Environmental Protection Agency for the state of Mexico because of open septic pits there. We have people running burn barrels. I believe there's, you guys have a moratorium on burning, don't you, in Sierra County?
It gets off now because of the rains, yeah?
I know that not, there's not a lot of burn barrels going in the world these days, but we do have them in Chacillo Creek. We just have a problem, and we need to figure out a way for these people who live here who are financially not as well off as the rest of us to be able to clean up their act and keep our property values up. And I just don't know what's the limit, but they can't afford to go to the dump, so they just dump it there. You know, as a landowner outside of the city limits and farther out in county, I'm glad that they're at least keeping, trying to keep it on their property and not on my ranch. But, and that's been a problem for as long as we've been around. And we just need to go forward into the future and figure out a solution for this. If Sierra County is clean, residents are gonna be happy, taxpayers are gonna pay their taxes, everything's gonna be cool. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, that's Andy Underwood.
Andy Underwood, yes, sorry.
Thank you. Steph Ross?
I did know he's got me speaking.
You've already spoken, huh?
Right.
Okay. What about Greg Ross? Mr. Ross, please state your name for the record when you get to the microphone.
It'll take you a while to get there, but.
That's all right. We're glad to have you.
I'm Greg Ross. I also live on either Lower Chacillo Creek Road or County Road eight double oh seven, whichever. Thank you for allowing us the chance to address this. I'm going to speak to the trash problem we have on our road. I would encourage each one of you to at least take a minute and drive by this crap hole. It is, it is beyond belief. They just throw up a shed here and there if they want to. There is so much trash lying around. I don't think you could make a hole big enough to bulldoze it into. There must be at least five or six different families living on this one parcel. We don't know what they're doing with their bathroom services. They do not even have a porta potty. They did have, but my guess is they did not pay the bill. You cannot believe it. And again, only seeing it is the only way you're gonna understand how bad it is. Now, I would ask you, if by chance the attorney says that there is no way that anything can be done because we don't have an ordinance covering what they're doing out there, I would ask that you folks consider at least creating a new ordinance that would keep this from happening in the future. Your hands may be tied, but future commissioners will have an opportunity to address this as a legal issue and take care of it. Attorney must know where, where we stand on that, but I assure you, it is terrible. When I have a close friend of mine stopping to see me, and he turned around and called me after driving by this place just to see if he was on the right road, that's how bad it is. So please, if you get the opportunity, drive by him. You will not believe what is there. Believe me. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Anybody else wish to speak regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero? Or, excuse me, any other public comment that didn't sign up for public comment? Hearing none, we'll go on. We'll consider with the resignation of Commissioner Travis Day, who was our chairman, leaving a vacancy. I'm sitting here today as a vice chair, and we need to consider the board to appoint a chairman and a vice chair. Attorney Pato, do I need to do anything before opening nominations? No, sir. Okay. I'll open nominations for the chair of the Commission.
Chairman, I nominate Hank Hoffman, Sheriff.
No.
I'm the vice chair. I'm the vice chair. Thank you, Sandy. There's no, no second.
Mr. Vice Chair, nominate Tim Paxton.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved. Is there a nomination for vice chair? I will nominate Hank Hoffman. You'll second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved. Hey, Beth.
No, and, and just as a comment, I know Mr. Hopkins had served as chair, been here a long time. Although I thought it would be honest to miss very long, and it is much, and everybody does know.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. The vote of confidence.
Yeah, we got the same answer when we talked to him a month ago. We will, when do we consider the board appointments?
That is under your business.
Yeah, under your house, I said, right there. Thank you. We'll go on with the consent agenda. Several items. This is pretty standard. If you've had a chance to review this, is there any discussion? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'm moved to accept.
Items H B B, I take it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved. Presentations and reports, fair ground update. Manager Vaughn.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I'd like to hand it over to Pluma and Wilson to do the presentation.
Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Billy Pacheco. I'm here with my dad, Chris Pacheco. We are managing members of Pluma Construction. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to provide a status update on the Fairgrounds Improvement Project. When we met previously, I accepted responsibility for the delays we were experiencing at that stage of the project. And today, I want to continue that same transparency and share exactly where we stand on the project. So at this point, we have completed all work that is possible for us to perform with the information and materials available. Our crews have finished trenching for utilities, grading site, construction, the retention pond, and then interior up to where we camp. We have advanced the project as far as we can, and we're now at a point where we can't continue without some additional approvals. There's two specific items that are preventing the project from moving forward. The first one being the retention pond and drainage modifications. So during construction, we discovered the retention pond is taking, taking in significantly more water than what was anticipated during the design phase. So now the entire property drains into that pond, and there is additional work needed to properly manage the flow into that pond as it is starting to work its way towards Broadway Street. Because of the volume of water entering the pond, some of it has eroded, which means before we can proceed outside, we'll need to reshape, regrade the pond, adjust the surrounding grading, and add a concrete curb to help divert some of that surface water that's running into that pond on the backside of the fairgrounds. All this work falls outside of the original project scope, and then we started conversations about those changes at the end of September. And we're just currently waiting for approval so we can remobilize the subcontractors that we have tabbed for, for that specific scope. The second one we ran into more recently, so inside the building, we encountered a conflict involving the kitchen hood that's being installed in there. The hood, as sized and designed, doesn't physically align with the ductwork shown on the plans, and as a result, we can't install it with the existing ductwork that's in there. So we submitted an RFI November sixth, and we received a revised design November fourteenth, and submitted an associated change order for work outside of our original scope for our subcontractor to finish that portion on the seventeenth. We're just waiting for, for final approval to get our subcontractor back on that work and get that hood mounted up in the kitchen. And until those two items are approved, we can't progress with the remaining exterior or interior of the project. Additionally, we ordered some, some doors inside of the building, the exterior doors. We still have the old ones on the fairground itself. We have new ones on the new build of the kitchen. We're just waiting on some doors from our manufacturer, which is Overhead Door, for the interior of the building. Those are in their warehouse. I talked to them this week, and as soon as they can get us on the schedule, they'll come out and install. So as soon as we receive approval for the drainage modifications and the HVAC kitchen hood work, we're prepared to remobilize against those scopes. Right now, just to get my subcontractors remobilized against the HVAC, the kitchen hood, the retention pond, grading, curb installation, and the fencing around the retaining pond and the HVAC utilities outside of the building, it'll, it'll probably take us about a month from approval to completion of interior and exterior of that project. Following that, we're ready to go into electrical, plumbing, HVAC inspections, as well as final inspection and getting the certificate of occupancy. So those are really the last, last items that we need to finish up this project. Our goal is still the same. We want to complete this project correctly to engineer specs. We want to give you a facility that the county can be proud of, and we're fully prepared to move. and we're fully prepared to move into the final phases of construction as soon as we just get final approvals. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued partnership.
Thank you, Mister Pacheco. Both of you. Any comments, commissioners?
I've got a comment. Not against you guys. I just think it's real interesting how much money we spent for architecting engineers over this project, and we're still waiting. I mean, to me, they should have caught this crap before it has come to come to now, and we should be, I mean, we're we're paying them money, why aren't they finding out this before now? I think I just think it's ludicrous.
Yeah, I mean, just from my perspective on other, just any other project we've worked on too. I have seen that the plans are great. And then once you start putting workers in the space and start lining things up, sometimes there are mismeasurements, and it's pretty common. I will say that, and I said this at the meeting, since I came and stood in here last time, the the cohesion and teamwork on this project has has improved drastically. We were able to make some pretty significant leaps and downs forward just just because we were able to open up those lines of communication and just start being honest and and telling each other the hard truths, so. This is more common than than I would like it to be. But we have, we have done a pretty good job with them jamming on getting the remaining items done, as frustrating as it is sometimes when you do hit those roadblocks.
Thank you. Do we have a representative from Wilson here? Would you come on?
Sure.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us today. My name is Rick Maldonado. I'm the Architecture Practice Lead for the Southwest Region. Thank you, Pluma, for the kind words. We appreciate it. We also second that. Our goal here is to work together and get this project to the finish line. The two items mentioned, we are currently working through. We also have one of our engineers here with us. If there's any additional commentary that needs to be presented to help you all have confidence that we're working as quickly and most efficiently as possible to get to the finish line here. We have escalated it within our group to some senior engineers as well to make sure that all of the answers are being provided in a timely fashion. I will also give you my word that I am going to stay involved in the project until the finish line. So thank you for that. I'll let Louis give an update in terms of any additional items that we have open and we're working through. They will remain on the project. I am just here to help. Certainly have plenty of confidence in both of these team members here, and we are working towards the end goal, which is to get you all a facility. And again, thank you to Pluma.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Louis Evers, architect, director for this project. I'll just get straight into the details of the weeds that was presented by the contractor. As mentioned, they're not, we're not ready to have a final punch list. There's a couple of things outside of the two remaining things we're actually having with the mechanical ducts and the pond. But set aside the the change order for the pond has not been approved, so the contractor should have just proceeded with installing the drainage pipes as designed in the original bid documents from the in between the 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 tent hall and the barn to the pond. What happens as to mitigate the erosion that's happening is really outside of our scope. And I don't really want to use that as a holding up of the contractor to finish that scope of work. In addition, there's still scope to work to be done on installing the sanitary sewer line from the back office trailer to the street that's still pending. And some unit hairs for the bathrooms are still, they had to change that out to a product that had met our specs, our basic design specs. So there's still some work to be done, and we're sparring to onsite realities for that, and we're gonna hand in hand work with the contractor to do that. But I think even if those two issues aside, I'm not sure we would have met substantial completion by the revised date presented last last in the meeting. Thank you.
Comments, commissioners?
Mister Mister Truman, I might just quickly.
Go ahead, Attorney Pato.
Um, so whose responsibility was it to design that range hood? And to to the ductwork?
Uh, it was our responsibility.
And on?
That's correct.
And and Mister Truman, was that an error?
I'm sorry?
Was that range hood designed in error? The ductwork and the range hood designed in error and not appropriate for the space?
Uh, well, what's what's the issue is not so much the range hood is the duct. So what we're missing to review is the shop lines. So that's been kind of something we've been having to work in the car before the horse for this project is reviewing semis that have already been ordered or installed. And so that's one instance of where that we had reviewed the shop drawings prior to installation.
Mister Truman, wouldn't it be the responsibility of the construction manager to ensure that those those designs and those those documents presented in advance so you could consider them? Isn't isn't that part of the role as construction manager?
Yes, and we we actually, well, maybe terminology is construction manager. We're less of a construction manager, more of, I mean, just in construction administration. So just making sure that contractors provide the necessary documents as presented in the project window, semis, R F Is, and pay ups and other things. Does that answer the question?
Yes, sir. Mister Truman?
If I may add to that, excuse me. So, yes, the the provisions of the contract do require coordination prior to installation. It's in the general conditions. We can look at that at any time we need to, but it does require infield measurements that was mentioned to make sure that there's no conflicts. If there is any conflicts, an R F I needs to be presented, we discuss through it and work through a a process or solution, if you will, that works for the project. So there are provisions in the contract to make sure it is well coordinated. That's correct.
Mister Truman, how long ago was it that you received the the change order request from Pluma?
For which for which one?
Uh, well, they they submitted two, I understand. So what were the dates for those submissions?
Uh, for the pond, that was sometime in the summer.
What was that?
Sometime in the summer.
Sometime in the summer, okay.
And we responded to that, yes.
And and then the other one?
Uh, that was, I think you mentioned November sixth.
And have you responded to that one? It's the twenty first.
I thought, I think it was the fourteenth. Well, I I need to look back on that.
Has 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 Wilson responded to that request for a change order?
Oh, we got we we got that. It was this week.
You you got what? I'm sorry.
The change order.
That was processed this week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Truman, I don't have any further questions.
Well, it's amazing to me because this has been a dilemma. And 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 I I I think that all parties share some of the responsibility. We're paying Wilson Architects, I think fifty eight thousand dollars for onsite inspection and coordination. It has failed miserably. Items not consistent with the contract. Remedial measures have not been identified and documented. Timelines have not been met. I understand that Playa Construction had some had some problems. There was a an extended period of time that work was was not not done for a variety of reasons. Our intent was to have this finished by September twenty sixth for the Sierra County Fair. We we certainly didn't make that. There are a number of uses of the Fair Barn besides the fair. Until we get a certificate of occupancy, none of those events can occur. Between Playa Construction and Wilson Engineering, when are we gonna have this job done? I'm encouraging County Manager Vaughn and Attorney Pato to enforce the requirements in the contracts with both Playa Construction and Wilson Associates, and and to hold you folks accountable. You know, into September, we'll have the Sierra County Fair again. I'm sure hoping we're done before then. This this is reprehensible that we have carried on, and, you know, excuses are just like belly buttons. Everybody's got one. It's time to get the job completed, get the inspections done so that we can use the Fair Barn facility. I I don't know what else to say. Any other comments? I really appreciate both Playa and Wilson coming today. Pluma, I'm sorry, Pluma, coming today. We are a small county. This facility is so important to the county. I hope that we expressed that when we were entertaining bids and and executing contracts. But the 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 project has not met our requirements nor our expectations. And we're gonna we're gonna conform to the requirements in the contract. I I expect to see some damages. Pluma paid the damages for the failure to meet September twenty sixth. You guys stood up. I I really appreciate that, and and you've been responsible. I'm really disturbed with the the lack of onsite management and and record keeping and medial measures being done by Wilson. The ductwork on the hood, I mean, that's does does the hood fit the space that's that's allocated for it? That was a concern early on. Are we getting the rerouting of the ductwork done so that it will be functional? It is, are the are the measures being done so that this will pass inspection by the state? There's there's too much stuff in the air, and we need we need answers, and we need action. Anything else, commissioners? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Well, let's go something happy. How about years of service?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. We have a couple today. We have some pretty big ones, actually. Start off in the Treasures Department. We have Constance Roberts with four years of service. In the Sheriff's Department with one year of service, we have Rafael Marine. And also in the Sheriff's Department with twenty five years of service.
Twenty five?
Twenty five. Bradley Spencer.
Morning.
Morning. Congratulations. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Y'all come around here, Charlie.
Also with twenty five years of service in the Road Department is Elizabeth Carson.
I'm not hurt, but I think I'm gonna throw away all this.
You might as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Well, Josh, you're close, so put that down and come back up and give us a road report. Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. President, commissioners. Well, you know, it's back through the October brings. That was pretty fun, right? Everybody's kind of good now. We're back on our regular scheduled lady. Got to call it back down to minimal. We've replaced a couple of over pipes up on the end of Algonon up towards the old Adams House up there. Put in some bigger ones. Got it reshaped, and hopefully that'll fix that problem up there. We're doing some L G R F stuff. We're finishing up. The twenty five, almost done with that. We'll be be done next month with that stuff, and then we should be finding out about our match day first after the Thanksgiving holiday to get started next year. So everything's looking pretty good, staying on track, keeping the guys busy.
I've got a quick question. This last storm that hit the Camby there or two ago, uh, did it bring down any of the creeks, or was it all just nice and slow?
So we did have a couple little creeks that came down very small, and we did have one road issue down south on East River Rose, and I'm gonna address that. I'm gonna have to put some better material there, because it what it does, it just kind of goes right through a field, so we're dealing with the topsoil and silt and stuff there once it got wet. The lady needed some some to get her health care worker in, so we went to care night yesterday, so. She should be good to go, and then we'll get that repaired up whenever we can get the guys rigged up a little bit more to get that just right with some some proper cover up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, Josh, did you get the suicide hill on Forseroe?
Oh, yes.
Take a chair?
Yes, we did. That that come out pretty nice. I was pretty happy with that project. I was on that one myself, helping the guys outside, so. So that is eliminated. We've got that hole filled in, got the road straightened out, kind of chattered graved down in, and hopefully the water will go where it's supposed to now.
Is that a two lane cattle garden now?
Oh, the cattle garden's in one lane, but it's a two lane road. So but but they do have visibility on either side. They can see each other come for about a hundred feet.
So you got the hill down significantly, huh?
Oh, yes, sir.
Several feet?
Yes. Yeah, I took it down probably about eight feet.
Good.
Yeah, so that's that's gone out of there. We got their gate put back up, so. You know, like I said, and got some good material up there for them guys. We capped it with, brought some in, and yeah, I think that'll hold up good, and all the campers and stuff going for the hunting should be pretty happy about that. I know Mister Mister Warren will be, so it'll be good.
Good. We we might not hear from him again, huh?
At least on that particular issue, though. The rest of that stuff might be something else, but we'll be here to help if we can.
That's a huge safety improvement, and it really was a hazard.
Yes, sir, and like I said, I've had that on my to-do list for so long, it's just, you know, I've got too new to that. I didn't know what I was doing, but now I feel like I'm getting a pretty good grasp on things, and it only took me about three years, but yeah, it's all good. I got another seventeen to figure it out, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, yes.
Nikki.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Chairman Vaughn, Attorney Pato. Not too much going on with SCURDA. We do not have a meeting this month. I do have a lot of texts in in-house this week. We're now implementing another program called Prepared Nine One One. It was a grant that I put in for and was approved through the state of New Mexico. It's extremely high-techy. It has automatic translation services, Q A programs, even video capabilities. Hoping to have that up and running in the next couple of weeks. They're installing the programs now, and this is at no cost for the county nor any of the SCURDA contributors, so I'm really excited about this program. I've worked with other nine one one directors in the country and with the state that are also having this installed, and it's pretty exciting for Sierra County to have this kind of technology coming up and and going. So that's about all we have, except for we got a lot of training before we gotta do at the end of our fiscal year here, training fiscal year on December thirty first, so I'm very fortunate. Sheriff's helping us out, giving us some room. I got other dispatchers that are coming into Sierra County to do some biannual training that SCURDA is gonna provide for everybody, and that's about it.
Great. Questions? Thank you, Nikki. Ryan?
Morning, commissioners. My name's Vaughn. We've completed all the public and stakeholder input meetings for Hazard, All Hazardal Communication Plan. It is now in the contractor's stand for the draft phase. We'll get that probably back in the next month for local approval, and then we'll be submitting that to FEMA for the final approval. Just for everyone's awareness, that plan is crucial. We're receiving federal funding for county and our surrounding municipalities. So once we get that back, it's a five-year update, and that was a grant we received last year for about ninety thousand dollars to get that plan completed, so. We have a lot of public meetings, a lot of stakeholder meetings. We're moving forward with it. Let's see, I just completed our annual fire fund audits. That happens every time about this year, just to make sure all our expense reports are clean and all the funding is going in the appropriate avenues. And then we just received a total of one point two million dollars in fire protection fund grants, and that's distributed evenly between Los Palomas for six hundred thousand dollars for a new engine, and Hillsborough Fire Department, wow, six hundred thousand dollars for a new engine. We haven't received the funding yet. The awards just went out. I think that's great. Those two departments need those new Class Eight Pumpers. Especially Hillsborough, the one that we're getting is four-wheel drive, lower gear, four doors. It'll handle the Emery Pass in the, um, you know, one fifty-two kind of area a lot better. Let's see, Lookout Site, Electronic Site is live as of last Friday.
No, can't.
Yeah, I gotta hand it out to, um, Advanced Communications and Travis Adwell. Yes, Mickey, he was on the tower climate. Sorry about that. A little risky, but it's good. But no, we're live, so that closes our complete dark zone of the northwest corridor of Sierra County. Along with, we're gonna be doing some frequency sharing with Catron County and Socorro. They were both in the dark in those whole areas, you know, no cell phone, no radio coverage. It's quite concerning when we send out, um, fire, law enforcement and EMS into those regions, so now they're live. The only radios we lack to program are sheriff's office radios. We will get those going with advance to get that frequency put in there. A lot of work, very remote site. I don't know if anyone's been out there, but it's a lot to haul the equipment out there. So now we have a forty-eight volt solar array with six days of backup power. And these photovoltaic cells are, um, when it says a blackout, I'm like zero sun. If we have cloud cover, we're still collecting, you know, sol- solar, uh, which is great. So next will be Emery Pass. We've completed all the, uh, fence work up there and now we're just waiting on the brackets for the solar install, which will happen here in about a week or two. And then once, um, those new solar brackets are completed with the solar array, we'll be going live on Emery Pass. And that will really close all of our gaps for communication. It's a great thing. Travis did some radio checks up there last Friday. And it actually came in so crystal clear with dispatch that even folks in Elk could be able to catch your hell in their handhelds. So it's a good thing. Long, long four-year haul to get this done, but I tell you, it's a, it's a great thing. And we got special use permits for that, no fee with the Forest Service. A week later after, uh, I'll just see, two weeks ago, the Forest Service shut down all no-fee special use permits. So we made it right in that window. Weather, we've received a little bit of moisture. It's nice to see. Our, uh, higher altitudes receive snow mix and have a little two-day break on it. And Sunday, we're supposed to receive some more, hopefully. Any other scrubbing, a little more we need it. And I conclude my report. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? You got me smiling all over. I've, I've been trying to get something on Lookout Mountain that goes back to the nineties. And, uh, and you made, you beat the snow this year. I was beginning to wonder.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, and Steve, I don't know. This is, this is a big deal for, for safety and public safety and fire and EMS. Because we can talk to people all the way north and west of, of Winston, all the way to Beaverhead, man. And we'll be able to talk into the canyons below Kingston as soon as they get the Emery Pass up and running. And we really have to thank Ranger Brett Malak for facilitating this and making some difficult decisions to go ahead with the project. But our, our officers, our EMS, our firefighters, the public is gonna be so much better served because Mickey's dispatchers can talk to them now.
I agree.
And this is, this is so, so satisfying to get this done. So Ryan, you pretty well headed this project up for the county and we appreciate you for that, too.
No, no problem. I appreciate it because it makes me get some sleep at night knowing when we send a sheriff's deputy or EMS up on that neck of the woods and we don't lose, we don't have any communication with them. It's, uh, it's quite stressful, the dispatchers and myself and the sheriff and everyone. We don't know what's going on, is there, uh, welfare, if they're okay? And then it's just, I think it's like, kind of like in the nineties when you go on a road trip, it's like, well, just call me when you get there. We don't know what's going on, so we appreciate all the support from all the agencies, so thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Manager Vaughn. As far as addressing goes, it's pretty much status quo, but I did want to give a little bit of an update from the time that I initially sent my first update back in August of twenty twenty-one and, and up until now. So the, the road and address counts from four years ago. Roads were three thousand and two, uh, road segments, and we had ninety, uh, nine thousand five hundred thirty address points. Now, as of, uh, November of twenty twenty-five, uh, our road count has increased by sixty-seven, so it's three thousand sixty-nine. And our address points are over ten thousand, we're ten thousand eighteen. And that's an increase of almost six hundred. So we're, we're doing pretty good there. Um, and then as far as errors go, from August of twenty-one, we had fifty-six errors in the road central database. We're down to one. And I'm, I, I just got the report yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to look to see where that error is at. And then for address points, uh, we had two hundred and forty-two, uh, errors and we're down to four. And so again, I need to see where those are at, and that concludes my report.
Questions or comments, gentlemen? Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Detention.
Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners, Manager Vaughn. Right now, we have, the last three months, we've been averaging forty-five transports a month as opposed to sixty-three at the beginning of the year. We have a total of fifty-three inmates in custody, forty-six are in UNA, five are at New Mexico Behavior Health, and we have two echos, one for a sixty-day eval and the other is for a CJO. Training, our staff completed use of force training, thanks to Sheriff Baker. And we also have some other training in the future that'll get us online to be more secure as we transport these inmates. Defensive tactics, less lethal, uh, chemical agents, taser, and then our handgun. And, uh, looking forward to doing that training with the sheriff's office. And that's about all I have right now. Open for any questions.
Questions or comments, gentlemen? Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Baker.
Commissioners, not a, a few things to report on. Criminals are still committing crimes and we're still chasing them, so. Our stats are staying about even. We, we did see the initial drop-off after summer and now they've kind of picked back up. We received a call last night from New Mexico State Police asking for our assistance in Socorro County on a major felony, so I sent a couple of deputies with the drones and the Bearcat up there to support them. That's the ongoing investigation of them. That's about the, uh, third time we've gone up to Socorro County in the last year to help out. We're happy to do so. We're blessed to be in a position where we have the equipment and expertise to help out. So we'll continue to support our partners any way we can. Later this afternoon, we have a promotional ceremony for Deputy Anthony Segorski, who's being promoted to patrol sergeant. We had our testing process and he scored the highest and is getting promoted later today. If any of you would like to attend that, it'd be at the sheriff's office at two o'clock. You're welcome to join us. Outside of that, we're working on our biannual and annual training requirements set out by New Mexico Legislature and enforced by the Academy Board. So we'll have all of our training in by December thirty-first, as required by the statutes. We're also lumping detention in with that, so that they're getting much of the same training we go through as far as use of force and taser and those things. We have the instructors, so they're joining us for those trainings, so we kind of do a comparative one. So, um, working on our program, the data sharing, uh, infrastructure that'll lump us in with New Mexico State Police and the others. We're still working on bringing that on board and still working to get our house in order for the accreditation, hopefully, uh, sometime next year. I was hoping by the first of the year, but, uh, getting destruction orders and things back from the district court and the DA's office is taking a little longer than we anticipated. So that's pushed our advance remotage back probably a month or two. But we are making headway and, and getting close, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Manager Vaughn?
Thank you, staff. They're a really good job. Thank you. I met the animals. Give them any questions.
Teresa, for the clerk's office, you got anything for the commission?
I do not, thank you.
Virginia, you got anything for the assessor's office?
No, I just wanted to get in the latest.
Okay, that's fine. All right, well, we will go on to the Board of Finance for the October reconciliation. Had a chance to review the documents. Are there any questions or is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve October reconciliation.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Move in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. The election canvas, the board convenes again as the County Canvassing Board, Attorney Payette.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that there be a motion to convene as the County Canvassing Board and I'll outline the next steps on the next section.
Okay. So we will go from the County Commission meeting to the canvassing board.
Normally, I would ask for a motion to convene as the Canvassing Board and then there would be a second.
Commander, move we, uh, recess and convene the Ca- County.
Canvassing Board.
Canvassing Board.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are recessed and in the canvassing board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. So, um, the basis for this action is on the morning of the last special commission meeting, canvas votes, which was the final day that this board was statually obligated to canvas the votes to comply with, um, statutory requirements. It was discovered that while the legal notice was placed in the newspaper advising the canvassing meeting, the agenda was not posted on the website for the canvassing meeting. Accordingly, this board convened an emergency meeting that day. Um, and I provided notice to the Attorney General's Office as a statually required to do, advising the basis for the emergency, outlining the circumstances resulting in that emergency and identifying the actions that we took. Rather than waiting for any sort of challenge that might come to the action that was taken at that emergency, um, I would, I, I, I would recommend this board consider ratification of the canvas if it adopts to that emergency meeting, therefore correcting any sort of concern regarding the lack of notice for that meeting. And that's our current question from the board.
Gentlemen, any questions or comments? Here none. Is there a motion to ratify the canvas that action was taken, what, November fourteenth?
That's correct, sir.
And just, uh, make it, uh, so we dot the i's and cross the t's. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
And Mr. Chairman, I'll let you second, but I wasn't here, so.
Okay, I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes. Thank you, Attorney Payette. Keep us, keep us straight.
And now you're gonna reconvene as the board.
Chairman, will we go back into the regular session of the commission?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're back in session for the commission meeting. Do we have any old business? I'm seeing the old business will go to new business. Appointment of boards and committee members. Manager Vaughn?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. With Sandy being on the, the commission out and Commissioner Day no longer on the commission, we have some appointments we need to make to different, um, boards and committees that he stood on as well as any other changes that we may need.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, are, uh, are there any of these committees that you're interested in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, uh, the Spaceport Tax District Committee, uh, that is one I would prefer not to be on. It could prevent, it could present, uh, a conflict, as you know, I do a fair amount of work out there.
Agreed.
I don't, I don't, we don't do much government work out there, but we have customers out there, so I'd rather, I'd rather stay out of that fray. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I had a brief conversation with, uh, Manager Vaughn this morning and she offered up to take the County Tourism Committee, and I think that would certainly be appropriate.
Yes, sir.
If that would, uh, if that would be happy with the, uh, commission. And then, uh, I, I could pick up the other two, the Joint Powers Coalition of Counties. That would probably work, if that's, if nobody else wants to.
Okay, we, we are, we have an amended JPA for the, the hospital. It actually reduces our members from three to two. Currently, I'm the chair of the Joint Powers Commission and Travis was a member and Hank was a member. If, if we need to change that, that's up to, to you and Hank. I don't, uh, I don't mind any way, but we are to reduce to two.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Hank, is that something you want to do?
It, it doesn't matter to me. If you want me to, I will.
You know, I'm really hooked up pretty tight.
Okay.
I think that's, you know, it's very important.
Sure.
The, uh, New Mexico-Arizona Coalition meets, uh, meet Coalition of Counties is, is it eleven counties in New Mexico and eight in Arizona, and they meet quarterly? That's generally an in-person meeting because Zooms are so difficult with that large body.
Where do they generally meet at?
Well, they meet all over. The last one was in Safford. Before that, it was in Socorro. So, you know, they go alternate between Arizona and, and New Mexico. And, uh, of course, any, any travel would be covered, but it's, it's the time and the preparation for their agendas. They are pretty important in, uh, getting legislative initiatives going. They're working real hard on, on, uh, getting the Endangered Species Act changed for the Mexican wolf designation and, uh, and, and a lot of other things that involve water and, uh, legislation that goes before the legislature. So if you're willing to take that on, Sandy, that would be good.
Let me ask you this, uh, Mr. Chairman, Hank, do you want to swap those out? That might be that, uh, that Coalition County, it might be something you want to do.
Yeah, I'm good with whatever.
Are you sure? Maybe we swap those out and would that be?
That'd be fine.
Certainly some more expertise in your area there, I'm sure. Okay, why don't you just swap those out and I'll take the hospital.
Okay.
And we're bringing in the tourism.
Yep, Cameron's gonna take the tourism.
I'll take care of the sick and elderly. Somebody, somebody, you're gonna listen to this face.
Okay. Manager Vaughn and, and Teresa, you got a handle on?
Yes.
What those assignments are gonna be?
Sure, yes, I do.
Is there a motion to approve the, uh, board appointments for the commission?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd move that we, uh, make those assignments best discussed.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion is approved. Okay, that's, that's good. Well, Amber took notes and so did Teresa, so that's good.
So recap, Amber goes to, to tourism.
Yes.
I go off Spaceport and Hank goes to, uh.
New Mexico-Arizona Coalition.
And I'll pick up Sierra Vista.
Sierra Vista, Joint Powers Commission. Okay, that's, that's good action. Thank you. Approval of records destruction. Virginia, have you heard of that or come on in?
Good morning, Commissioner and Manager Vaughn. It's just for, um, we're just wanting to destruct some of the records that we've been hanging on to for a few years. And so we've gotten approval through the state and now we just need approval from the commission.
Any questions? Get those old records out here, huh?
Is there a move to approve the record destruction?
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Uh, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that a vote, Mr. Jones, or?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That motion is approved. That was quick, Virginia. Thank you. Summary replat of a portion of Lake Tavio State subdivision.
Good morning again. So at the new packet, there's a summary replat survey for the Lake Tavio State subdivision. There is one singular owner that owns the entire subdivision. And, uh, what happened was, I believe, as a family member of the owners, uh, the Barreras, he was told he could build a house in there. He built the house while the term.
he was told he could build a house in there, he built the house, well, it turns out that that house was not entirely within one of the lots, so it, it required a shifting of the rotten real road. It has not been built yet as of the timing of that house being built, and the owners have had members of the community looking to purchase some of the land in there, and so they're looking to put that road in, but before doing so, they need to have an approval of the relocation of that road. It does not affect any of the utilities or easements, it adjusts some of the lots, those lot numbers being one, five, six, seven, and eighteen through twenty-four. And what they ended up doing was shifting lot number nineteen up to being number twenty-three, from what the original plot was. And I have a copy of the original plot, if you want to take a look at that as well, so you can see the difference.
You're stressing my old eyes.
We do have a large, a large copy rolled up here, if you need to see that as well. Yeah, I think we can look at it just to know. This is the original layout. Lot number nineteen was here. The house that was built is up here, so they shifted lot number nineteen up to here. Same, same lot numbers, there's still one through twenty-four, they just adjusted twenty-two and twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four to what it was, and shifted these down, eliminating nineteen and going up here, so, but we do still have one through twenty-four.
Is there a road rerun?
Yeah, see, the road used to come in here, we are right about here, and then come down, and so it's been shifted to, it comes in this way.
And no lots sizes were minimized?
Um, they still fall within the, the subdivision total as far as the acres, so they shifted just very slightly.
And are any of these sold?
No, it's all one singular owner right now, Barrera and Company LLC, which is Helen and Lorenzo Barrera.
Any, any further questions? Attorney Pato, do you have an opinion to share, or?
No, Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity to speak with, with Keith about, with Mr. Whitney about this last week, and I'm in agreement with the approach.
Commissioners, any questions?
Any motion to approve?
Yep. Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The summary replat for Lake of Iowa State subdivision is approved. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll go to item nine, contracts agreements and proclamations, Manager Vaughn on fiscal agent agreement with the COG.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This item is to allow the COG to be our fiscal agent. We are needed to do this due to an audit finding we had, we'll report that we have done a full fix ass account, we are working very diligently, and we are waiting for the auditor who's here to look at that item and hoping that it will be done, and we will no longer need this agreement. I stand for any questions.
Questions, Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Vaughn, what is, what is the cost involved in that?
Oh, the COG has not generally charged us to do that, it's been free.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but Attorney Pato. Commissioner, I was just gonna answer your question, the agreement though does provide that it will pay the actual costs attended to the, the assistance, but I understand that they have not previously charged me.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
If we approve the South Central Council of Government Fiscal Agreement.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. We'll go to item twelve, proclamation honoring the life-saving actions of Glenna Hunt and EMS, Manager Vaughn.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. It's honoring the life-saving actions of Glenna Hunt and EMS, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Sierra County met in regular session on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at ten a.m., in the Sierra County Administration Office at seventeen twelve mark date. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Sierra County exercises the powers of the county as a public, politic, and corporate pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section four dash thirty-eight dash one. Whereas Ms. Glenna Hunt, resident of Anamis Creek Community near Cabio, demonstrated extraordinary courage and compassion when she discovered her neighbor unresponsive in his recliner, and acting on instinct and concern, entered his home to check on his welfare. Whereas, upon realizing the gravity of the situation, Ms. Hunt immediately summoned emergency medical services, whose prompt response and skilled care successfully revived the resident, whose blood sugar level had fallen to a life-threatening twenty-four. And whereas, it is without question that had Ms. Hunt not taken immediate action, her neighbor would not have survived. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Sierra County wishes to recognize both Ms. Hunt's selfless act of courage and the dedication of EMS personnel, whose professional response preserved the life of a valued member of our community. And whereas, their actions embody the finest traditions of neighborly care, civic responsibility, and humanitarian spirit that define Sierra County. Now therefore be proclaimed that we, the Board of County Commissioners of Sierra County, do hereby extend our deepest gratitude and recognition to Ms. Glenna Hunt and the emergency medical services personnel for their life-saving actions and devotion to the well-being of others. Thank you.
Do we have Ms. Hunt, some of the EMS folks here, please come on up.
She, she guys like to say something?
Say what?
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we have my father, who unfortunately passed away a week and a half ago. Um, he had asked my husband and I to make Glenna, um, a plaque, a thinking plaque. And, um, because of the circumstance, we didn't have time, um, to make a new one, but, um, we used the one that we had made my dad, um, last year, and he asked us to get it in break for you, so, um, this is from my dad. But because of the actions of Glenna, um, she gave us six more weeks for my dad. Um, and so we are forever, forever grateful, um, for that. But this is from Ted, um, this is for you, and, um, thank you so much, um, for that so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Glenna, thank you for being a good guy. We appreciate it.
Would you be my neighbor?
I would hope they anybody would do it in that situation, you know?
Well, that's a great example, thank you. We'll go to item C, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-two, supporting New Mexico County's legislative priorities. Vaughn and Attorney Pato.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So every year during the August timeframe, New Mexico County passes their priorities, and they ask us to pass those in our commission meetings. The priorities listed here are the Detention Reimbursement Fund. This fully funds County Detention Facility Reimbursement Act, funded reinforced counties for actual cost of housing state inmates. According to the New Mexico Situance Commission, the five-year average cost to house New Mexico Corrections Department inmates is nine point three million. The current fund stands at five million. Courthouse funding, authorized continued fund.
No, don't leave yet.
No, I just have to.
Excuse me.
Courthouse funding, authorized continued funding to AOC for construction and renovation of state district courthouses. Counties maintain that courthouse and are of state responsibility, and that rise in cost of construction, security, and IT necessitates a shared revenue system, revenue stream. Detention recruitment and retention, this authorized continued funding for the newly formed Corrections Workforce Capacity Building Fund administered by DFA. Adequate detention staff are essential to a safe while operated detention facility, which is directly correlated to community safety. Another item, firefighter EMS recruitment fund, authorized continued funding for the fire and EMS recruitment fund administered by DFA for fire departments to staff, recruit, and retain career and volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel. Call volume has increased by as much as fifty percent, response systems are overburdened, average age New Mexican volunteer firefighter is sixty-five. Also on here is seven hundred megahertz radios, authorized continued funding for the monthly operational costs to build out state interconnectivity infrastructure. Rise funding, secure HSD funding for county participate in the rise, the reach, intervene, support, engage program to provide behavioral health, medical assisted treatment, housing vocational, and other services to people in detention. Item two is the IPRAC improvements, and then the Inspections of Public Records Act to exempt from disclosing specific information and prohibit certain requests used to compromise and obstruct critical local government services. And finally, timeline for veteran property tax exemptions. Require all veterans to file for a property tax exemption within the existing property tax annual schedule to ensure equitable treatment for all taxpayers and allow counties to accurately budget for the fiscal year. Veterans would have thirty days after the notice of value to file an exemption or request an extension for up to a hundred days to resolve any delays in certification. I felt we could communicate, will stand for any questions.
Questions, Commissioner, on any particular item?
Want to move it out?
No, I got a question on seven hundred megahertz radios. Sheriff, you're just in time, approach the podium if you would, we're gonna talk about seven hundred megahertz communications. The last time we talked, which was several months ago, you could not talk direct to the state police. You had to go through our dispatch to their dispatch in Las Cruces, and particularly in life-threatening situations like pursuits and officer-involved activities that threaten life. There was a considerable delay and disconnect in getting those done. You, you have also been on the sheriff's affiliate, what, what are we talking about, about this? This is too vague, too generic. I understood then that the cost of implementing the seven hundred megahertz was gonna be several thousand dollars per radio, per year. Has anything changed, that this is more palatable to the, to the, the system? And are we gonna be able to talk to state police radios, state parks, and Department of Forestry and others?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, can I get the first part of what was said while I was out of the room, so I'm assuming this is a legislative?
It is, it's a, it's the New Mexico County's legislative priorities support for all thirty-three counties to say, yeah, this is, this is what we want. I just, I, I, I don't know that we have enough information to act on this, I, I don't know, if you've got.
So I can provide what insight I have, Mr. Chair, there's, there's a few problems. So the state is going with the, the do-it system, and for us to get in on the ZAM radio frequency that New Mexico State Police, State Parks, and those agencies are on, they are wanting to bill us, and it is several thousand dollars per radio, and I think that's on a monthly basis, Ryan might be able to help provide some input on that. I believe, it, it's extremely expensive, and that's why, that's part of why we have not wanted to do it. The other part is, the infrastructure's not in place. So Sierra County is, is not flat, it's geographically not conducive to the seven, eight hundred megahertz, and Ryan can probably back me up on that as well, it's the, the peaks and valleys that we have. The reception's not great here, and it causes us some, some problems, but the, the financial obligation is, is more than we could afford at the way it currently is, and I don't know if New Mexico County's just trying to get the legislation to pay for that, for everybody to have it, or what exactly their plan is, or how they're gonna do that, because they're basically trying to force everybody to this do-it system that's extremely expensive, and it doesn't work very well. For instance, if a state police officer is on the side of the road, whenever he speaks, he speaks to his dispatcher, but the other patrolman can't hear him, and so if he's yelling out shots fired, that's gotta go to his dispatcher, and then that dispatcher puts that back out to the other officers, which causes a delay. On our current system, I can hear what my deputy say to dispatch and vice versa, so there's a lot of problems with the system in its totality, and I just don't know that, it's not something I'm interested in going to, I would like to have the capability to speak to those agencies, but I've shared my frequency with all of them, so they can jump on our system and talk to us at any time. I have radios capable of going seven, eight hundred, so the plan was to add the infrastructure in place so that if they ever did share, we, on major incidents and things, we can share communications. But in talking to state police, we have to go through do-it to get those frequencies, and they won't charge us, and I'm not willing to pay them to be able to help them. I feel like they should share those frequencies so that we can help them, or they can get on our radio channeling, and we'll go that direction.
Ryan, do you have any more on that?
Yeah, and the sheriff's correct on that, the state do-it, seven hundred megahertz system, we don't have the infrastructure here. We don't have the equipment, that the county would be responsible for purchasing, high-dollar equipment, and so the translate that this bill is, is to continue the subscription services. Let's just say if we wanted to spend close to a million dollars just to outfit our law enforcement EMS and firefighter, we have the hardware, we have the equipment, but now there's a subscription service, so if you, if you have units sitting in a parking lot, we're paying a monthly subscription service for those radios, but the problem is, we don't have the infrastructure in place. Seven hundred megahertz decays, it's a line-of-sight point-to-point radio system. It will not make it through the mountains, it decays through earth and mass, concrete, metal buildings. It's, it's, it's an idea for the state, it's a, it's a trunking system, but I just had a meeting yesterday in Silver City with eight different counties. Luna, Oldago, Doniana, they're going to them, but as soon as we get into mountainous trains, we have Sierra, Grant, Socorro, that are gonna be inhibited by having that coverage. Right now, do-it only has one site on Cabio Peak, they've called me numerous times to secure other sites with towers, but federal agencies will not allow it, just because it takes hard power, electricity, you can't do it on a solar site. It's a challenge for us smaller, smaller counties, but it will not work. Even if, even if they said, yeah, here's the coverage map and propagation study, it will not work for us. But it's a huge challenge, and we have big events where Sierra County Sheriff's Office or fire cannot talk to Sheriff about state police. I met with Captain Reed yesterday in Socorro about it, too, state police, and our minions in Silver City, and it's just a huge challenge. Their, their, your hands are tied, I mean, you can't talk to a patrol unit that's, you know, a hundred people, right? The state implemented, State Parks has do-it seven hundred, New Mexico State Police, some of the DOT, but.
Game and fish.
Yeah, game and fish, I, I understand the idea. We, I would say Spaceport bought into it in two thousand and eighteen. I didn't, I wasn't very happy with the system, because I'm, I have a tower right above me with the microwave shooting in straight to Cabio Peak, since I walk into the firefighter living quarters, which is a metal building, we lose all frequency, we lose everything, we don't have any coverage. So, we actually had to put boosters in all the buildings just to get that. And then here, just our mountainous train, the pottery will not allow for coverage, even if they got approval through the federal sites. But it is for subscription services, they're trying to cover the subscription, but, you know, sheriff had thirty units, and he's only using four of them a day, you're paying a monthly fee for those vehicles and those radios just sitting there, every day for a monthly service. It's costly, I understand the idea, they want to unify and go to a big system, it's just, it's just not gonna work in our, in our county, especially Katrin County, I'll speak into the county manager, they have all our ballots, it's not gonna cover in Katrin, it won't cover in Sierra. Maybe in the I two-five corridor, but that's all, so, you know, that's a small amount of square miles in our county.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess in short, if, if what they're trying to do is pay for our subscription fee so that we could have their frequency to communicate with them, I would be in support of that, but if it's to try to move us to that system, I would oppose that. So, I, I, I would have to read the bill that they're, they're trying to support in its totality to, to give you an answer. But in short, if it's wanting to pay so that we can hop in and be able to communicate when necessary, I'm okay with that. If it's about moving everybody to this as a primary frequency, then I would be against it in Sierra County.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I might address one additional priority, this is number two, where they propose to amend the Inspection of Public Records Act to exempt from disclosing specific information or prohibit certain requests, use to compromise and obstruct critical local government services. Last night at the Oregon Commission meeting, the commission- Last night at this whole county commission meeting, the commissioners identified how they did that language is and that it's not clear exactly what exemptions they'll be seeking. And certainly this board has always expressed its preference for open government ensuring transparency and access to its budgets and other records. And we certainly would support legislation that sought to alter the public's ability to access that information. So what the board directed yesterday is that the manager reach out to NMC for further instruction, direction regarding the scope of the exemptions they're seeking so that it can be presented to the board at the next meeting. And I might recommend this board consider the same. I wouldn't want you all to approve legislative priorities seeking to impose exemptions than have something presented that doesn't reflect the intent and wish of this board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to table. Till the next meeting.
I'll move to table with additional information, Manager Vaughn on the seven hundred megahertz radio and the IPRA.
A second.
Move to second, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, if you have to help, I'd rather drop you off to transmit joy and grace regarding the concerns, request additional information.
Thank you. We're down to E, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four budget adjustment. Manager Vaughn.
I'd like to hand it over to Jessica Pender, the financial.
Morning, Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioner, Manager Vaughn. I've got a few adjustments in this one. The first two lines are to correct revenue budget for an eight thousand dollar transfer to the landfill. This transfer was previously approved with the fiscal year twenty-six budget. This simply corrects the the budgeted revenue to match that transfer. The next two lines for forty-nine thousand eight sixty-eight are to budget a transfer from the emergency management fund to the title three fund. This is a transfer that should have occurred in last fiscal year of twenty-five. And I'm now looking to correct that and correct the title three fund balance. The next line is to budget three point four million in revenue for the TPF grant for the Sugar Sand Bridge. And the last line for a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred is to amend the budget for the detention recruitment grant received from the state. We budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars, but the state has dispersed the remaining allotment to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. On our expense lines, we're starting again, the first two lines are the TPF funding for Sugar Sand Bridge along with the corresponding match of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The match is coming from the fund balance in our fund five hundred grid fund. Next, we're amending the amount budgeted for the law enforcement retention and recruitment funds for a reversion to DFA in the amount of one thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. And then the last line is again related to the detention recruitment grant that we're correcting the budgeted amount to a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred to cover the full allotment. And then finally are the two previously mentioned transfers, the eight thousand for the landfill and the forty-nine thousand from EMS to the title three fund. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Chairman? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I want to approve the budget adjustment resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eighty-four.
Second.
Move to second, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm remiss, my old eyes, I I wanted to go back to resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-three. Appointments to the Sierra Vista Hospital Governing Board. We will have a meeting on December first to make those appointments. I'd like a motion to table, please, so good.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is tabled, we will take action at nine o'clock on December first. Thank you for that and excuse my oversight. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero five, amending and restating Sierra County solid waste ordinance, number twenty-three dash oh two. Attorney Paydough.
Mr. Chairman, I presented this earlier along with the sheriff, we heard from the public in conjunction public hearing. I wanted to just briefly address the issue with respect to the cars and enforcement. The purpose of this amendment again is to allow for the sheriff's department's enforcement. That was the that was the impetus and the goal behind the amendment here today, to clean up the statutory or the language of the ordinance, to track the statutory language and to provide him the basis to move forward with that enforcement. So.
Will this give it more teeth?
According, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hawkins, according to the sheriff, it will, yes. And it provides an additional basis for for bringing these charges and maintaining these charges. So that's what the purpose of this was. And ultimately it's gonna re- rest in the officer's discretion what what constitutes treasure and what constitutes trash. And I think that's something that that they exercise regularly in the performance of their duties. So we're trusting our officers to go out and do the right job and do the job and do what they do with that recognition that this board previously expressed that, you know, being sensitive, that people choose to live in an uncorporate area of the county so they can live the way they choose to live to the extent it doesn't compete on their neighbors' enjoyment of their property.
And and health and safety. That's the concern I heard was groundwater and accumulation of trash and generally cars. Sheriff, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so I just wanna point out to the board that these amendments strictly address the the household trash and refuse and garbage and blowing onto neighbor properties. And it was tailored that way based on, I was lieutenant at the sheriff's office, but I was here for the meeting whenever the original ordinance was adopted. And that was a hot topic amongst the commission was about the junk versus treasure and the amount of cars and things like that. I can tell you from some of these properties though, these are like crashed out rolled vehicles that are being hauled in, blind have been hauled in. I have no clue this is America, you can haul what you want onto your property. And but this amendment strictly addresses the garbage and the trash. If the commission wants to address the the junk to vehicles and that sort of thing, I I think it would require a whole second posting and amendment and things like that. And I would ask that that you consider going ahead and passing this one today. And if the commission wants to take on a deeper look at the ordinance as it applies to, you know, the junk to vehicles and those sort of things, that could be done. But we would have to post, I believe, Attorney Paydough might correct me on this, but I believe because that was not posted or in the public hearing, that that would have to be reposted and redone. But I think if that's what the the commission wants to do, I would I would request that you all set aside some time to take a deep dive into that and be very strict in the parameters that you're gonna set. Because it does make it very hard on the deputy who's out in the field and the neighbor's griping about this property and we're taking enforcement on this one, but we're not taking enforcement on this one. So if if the commission does does decide they wanna go that route, I would just ask that you set some time aside, take a deep dive into it and set some very, very plain parameters for what is and what is not allowed. But either way, I would ask that you approve thi- these amendments today as they come through all the process and it will give me the ability to go out and start dealing with some of the immediate problems.
Thank you, Sheriff.
My question is, and it sounded like the public responded to this, this one person has received so many citations, he could wallpaper his bathroom. So, I mean, at what point does the county, I mean, quit issuing citations and takes the next step?
Well, I believe under our, so currently we've been having to use state statute for citations. And I believe with these amendments, there are provisions in there, Attorney Paydough, if you can help me with that, where we could ask the court to give us remedy to go clean it ourselves and then obviously we're filed a lease. The, that's why we're asking for these amendments as as it pertains to the garbage and refuse.
Sure.
And I know there was some public comment about the expenses and things involved and I'm sympathetic to that. But we have quite a few garbage receptacles around town, we have a transfer station. I personally, I don't pay for for the waste, I have a trailer, I collect my trash, I haul it off, I pay a much discounted rate at the the transfer station to haul my own trash off. There's other, there's other means available.
Sure.
But I believe that there's remedies in our ordinance as it stands when it comes to the actual trash itself, that the county can take action through the courts to get it cleaned up if they want.
That's correct. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, under the definition of privilege in the ordinance, it includes all junk cars or bodies of automobile. So that would that would permit, provide some discretion for enforcement as it relates to that. But I I understood from that previous discussion this board that it it estimated and anticipated that the sheriff's department officers would exercise discretion in doing that and and not just take people's old fifty-seven Chevys and so forth, you know, because it's sitting on the front yard.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I think I've got a number of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So this ordinance is in front of us, is this an all the new right or is it part of this red line?
This was this was a red line, yes.
And what what's the new language in this ordinance?
The new language addressed just the definitions and I can pull up that prior red line, but it it addressed the definitions that were brought up by the sheriff. And actually let me find my other response about it.
So if I get into this where it discusses a franchise fee.
That is unchanged from the.
That that's all, that's all. So the only, the only difference is the is the definitions.
That is correct, and let me let me actually confirm that. I I know we did not change any of that process. So just give me one moment.
I believe there was some changes slightly to the prohibited activities there.
Okay, here I outlined in my email to you, Sheriff, back in September, what the changes were. So we had, it keeps existing structure but provides a clear basis to proceed where household trash is being stored and discarded in a way that poses health safety risks. Section five now expressly covers solid waste, refuse, household waste and CND debris. I removed litter and with it debris as a subconcept from section four, since those terms were not defined in the solid waste act regulations. We retained existing definitions for refuse and household waste, which are the operative categories you need for charging decisions. And those were the, those were the scope of changes to this solid waste ordinance.
So in here where it says that every building permit issued by the state in New Mexico to for for a construction building permit requires the employment of a of a box, the solid waste box to be used for construction debris?
Yes, sir, that was that was contained in the original ordinance.
So are we enforcing?
Let me let me confirm that for you, what was that, I'm sorry.
Do we enforce that?
I'm not aware of whether or not we enforce that, sir.
Have we ever enforced it?
I'm not aware of whether or not the county's ever enforced that.
Are you talking about, we're we're basically a dumpster?
So the language in this ordinance says that if if a building permit is issued, the permittee will, is required to employ a dumpster at the side for construction. I could get you to the.
Sheriff, I see it. Well, my question is, it sounded like Andy Underwood said a lot of these people can't afford the forty dollars a month, is that what he said?
That's for trash removal, that's not a dumpster, dumpster's on the top of that.
Yeah, so here's here's the deal, if if I wanted to remodel my house and I hired a contractor to got a building permit to do it, under this ordinance you have to go get a container, forty, whatever size, a trash dumpster container, roll off or whatever that is. Two things, I, one, it's probably eighty percent of the time not necessary. Second of, I've never heard it being forced because I've certainly pulled some building permits and I may be, Sheriff, is there statute of limitations in that?
I think you're safe, Commissioner.
So, and there was a couple of other other items in here and I'm, look, I'm, well, let me back up. So Sheriff, how, I call in and tell you my neighbor's got junk cars next to me, I don't like them, what do you do next?
As it currently sits?
No, under this ordinance, what would you do?
Under this ordinance, not much, we'll come out and look at it. If if it's not a public safety or or a health issue, then we're not gonna mess with it. Again, this is America and we don't have a statute that says what you can or can't have on your property. Now, that's what I was alluding to, if the commission chooses to take a deeper dive into that, you know, you guys are legislative branch, I'm the executive branch and and we will enforce and uphold the laws that are passed by this body. But we need some clear guidance, right? It it's not, it's pretty subjective for me to come and say, well, I like this car so you get to have ten of these and I don't like this car so you can't have ten of these. What is the quantitative number? What is the measure that we are going to utilize to say something is legal versus illegal? And that's the clear guidance, I think if we're gonna dive off into that side of things, that's what I would ask of the board, is give us some clear guidance of of how and what to enforce. Because whenever it's too subjective or too open ended, then the safer route for us is to not dive off into it.
We we drive into town and there's a wrecking yard on the side of the road. To me, that's just as ugly as my neighbor having it there. And what if the cars are leaking oil all over the ground, does that now tell me that you can get rid of them?
Well, now, by this, yes, technically we could cite you and we could go through the legal process in the courts and get an order to have you remove them. But as far as like me just coming on your property and and taking your property, no, we'd have to go through the courts and through the due process and get a court order to have either you remove them or we remove them.
But you would have to come up with something that'd be a public safety issue.
As it stands now, yes.
Radifested.
As it stands now, yes, sir.
And then for just household trash, and and I really understand the frustration there of the neighbors or whatever. But I'm just trying to figure out how you, can you on your own initiative drive by and see a trash all over someone's yard and on your own initiative, go in and say, we're gonna cite you and take you to court?
Yes, we could.
Anybody else?
And and so, but again, it's not about what's on your property as much as what's blowing off of your property onto the neighbors or onto public lands. And so, for instance, the the property that was complained about most today in the public comment and public hearing, that is the case. It's not that they have a trailer full of trash on their own property, it's that that trailer full of trash is being torn up by animals and it's blowing all over the neighbor's property and all over the road right of ways and everywhere else. That's the bigger issue and that's what I'm trying to address, is some enforcement leg so that your trash doesn't affect everybody around you.
They did.
Yeah.
I'd like to see them. Sheriff, how many times has that that particular land been cited, do you know?
I I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but more than once. But here's the pictures that they provided, as you can see what they're actually complaining about.
And and you don't think the state statute allows you to do what you need to do?
So what we're looking for is, okay, I cite you and you go pay your fine. A month or two later, I cite you again, you go pay your fine. This gives us the ability to plead to the courts for the county to go in. If you're not gonna clean it up, then clean it up and then we can either bill you or or the county can take appropriate legal action that way. But there's no, there's no remedy for solving the actual problem. So I can cite you for littering, but that's all I can do, is cite you for littering. That's what's occurred here, is we've issued citations, they get it cleaned up, the judge either defers or dismisses the citation and then two months later it's back again. And we've run this gamut for like three years now. It's been kind of a never ending process. And so what we're trying to do is find a an ordinance that will allow us to actually solve the problem.
So you think this ordinance will?
For the for the garbage and refuse, for the household trash, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address Commissioner Jones's issue, I think this, these revisions came from a case that the sheriff had brought. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe that was under the state, was it under the state law? Or was it, and she said that state law didn't have a penalty or something of that nature, is that way we had to do it through?
No, that was the animal control.
Oh, gotcha, I'm sorry.
That was the animal control thing that we had.
Okay, gotcha, I apologize.
So in this one, we're trying to find some end result to the the reoccurring problem. So, and this one was trying to find some end resolve to the, the reoccurring problem.
And the complaints from the constituents, at the end of the day, I'm an elected official, I serve the people. The people wanna resolve to this, and so that's what I brought before the commission, is something to resolve the problem that's being posed to me.
And I won't belabor this, uh, too much. But, and, and Sheriff, you remember us talking about, uh, some dumping at Eagle, just, just the other night?
Yes, sir.
Um, as I drive through the county, and I can tell you that the flood commission property is now become a dump. So, we're gonna start addressing that, fencing it, doing whatever it is, because you could come cite me, I think, or cite the county for, for that, but how, how does that address, when I drive around the county, I see stuff dumped everywhere.
Right.
Right? Um, I think I see more stuff dumped around on public property or right of ways more of that than I do in a neighborhood like this. So, to me, that's equally as important, how, how, how can we either ac- get this in there where that gets cleaned up as well? Or, h- how, how can we address that, and I'm, and the reason I bring that up is, two things. I, I really don't like the language in some, in the rest of this ordinance where it's required to have a, a roll off for a building permit 'cause it's, first of all, unenforceable or non-enforceable. And then, there's the whole stuff in here about key cards, and how we, how we, uh, would we pay at a transfer station? I think that's all good stuff if we're moving that away. But I, I, concerned me if it's just in here and then one day we wake up and nobody knows we're gonna use a key card and they gotta prepay. That, that concerns me, so, for me to support it in, in total, I would like to see us just redo this, bring out some of this stuff that I don't think is correct. Or maybe that I could convince you that wasn't correct, like the roll offs, uh, that kinda thing, and I, I think if we, I would support this if the commission would kind of agree to let us relook at this in the future, and that's all I'll say.
Well, there are a few places of ice stores, you know? One of them is the, the draw on the way to Can Trail Dam, that's
Exactly.
to the south of the, the shooting range. Every time I go out there, there's additional mattresses and, and the blinds they took out of the kitchen remodel and dead animals. And there's several times in the past few years that the shooters have gone in there and cleaned all that mess up, and it doesn't take them a month until it's back again, and it's on BLM land, BLM won't even come out and look at it. But, the, if, if you take that drive up double oh seven, it, it's a, it's a pretty sad thing, I understand why the neighbors are upset. There, and, and you get a storm with the wind, there's, there's trash that's crossing the road, you know, it's flying. So, if, uh, if, if we need to table this and clean it up, I, I don't know, we might, uh.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I believe I can address Commissioner Jones's concerns by revisions today to the, to the ordinance. If you all have the ordinance in front of you, I propose that we go through that real fast, I could identify which specific revisions I'd like to make. So, we would keep section one, we would keep section, well, actually, section two, since we don't have that electric, electronic card system. Um, we probably wanna remove reference to that, so just leave it solid waste disposal fee, if that works. Um, the solid waste disposal fee is hereby established, change it to that. Authority remains the same, the definitions remain the same. Scrolling down onto section five, accumulation of solid waste, these are the, the needy subjects that the sheriff was looking for, so I think those all remain the same as well. Um, illegal disposal, um, I think that remains the same as well. Prohibited materials and acts, I think those also remain the same. The solid waste disposal of county transfer stations, we might need to look at this real fast. I think A is fine, B is fine, C is fine, D is fine, E is fine, F is fine, G is fine. Electronic cards and solid waste disposal fees, so here we'll remove reference to electronic cards and stick with the solid waste disposal fees. Any purcha- any person they purchase and utilize. Okay, so we probably need to remove all these references to the electronic cards. Um. Actually, I think this whole section may need to come out, because it all relates to electronic card. Except for maybe the last paragraph, so let me get down to F. A cardholder will be allowed to dispose of solid waste, per the solid waste disposal fee settled up by the resolution, and set it to the G R T. Four percent at franchise fee if the merchant was a solid waste contractor. Do we wanna remove reference to solid waste contractors, since we don't have that in place, that's not an immediate foreseeable future? And it was at the bottom of section nine? Yes? Okay. Um, and then go back to the fees established by resolution, loss of such annual increase, da-da-da-da. Um, uncovered, unsealed solid waste civil penalty fee. Um, this board has the discretion to increase that fee at this time, this was adopted many years ago, I don't know if two twenty-five is sufficient to protect the county from, um, uncovered loads, I'll share what other counties have done. Um, they charge the cost of a tarp, so that way, people have to buy a tarp every time they, so we sell the tarp to them at some rate of five or six dollars. And that way they have a tarp that they have for subsequent use, um, when they're hauling loads, I don't know if that's what the board wants to do, but we can address how we'd like to do that.
I think you addressed what's the problem, uh, I, I do wanna get a lot, I know I'm getting long here, but on the construction building permit.
Oh, we haven't even gotten there yet, Commissioner Jones, but
Okay, I, yeah.
Yeah, if, if we stick, if we stick on section ten, we're just gonna go up there, but that's alright.
I'm sorry, I, yeah.
But, so if we just get a number for what the board would think would be reasonable to pay, have, charge these folks for coming with un- uncovered loads and in terms of dropping along the county rightsway.
Yeah, there shouldn't be a, a fine for that.
Well, it's two twenty-five now, but it's not sufficient, so, well, I guess you guys decide whether or not that's sufficient. As I said, what we do in other counties is we sell them tarps, essentially.
And then what is it now?
It's two, two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I, I would think it'd be five times a dump fee. And it needs to be enough to, it needs to be enough to make it, because that is a big problem, we follow, have every, all of us follow guys down the road, get trash running out of the trucks and, and they're gonna, by the time they get to the transfer station.
Then what happens?
Then it's not quite as expensive.
So maybe like a twenty-five dollars civil penalty plus, and then in that, a- as a result of that, we give them a tarp? I mean, so that way, they have no excuse in the future to not tarp their.
Do we have tarps now?
Well, I don't know, I think we have to probably buy it, but, and stock them there, but for the twenty-five dollars and where they recover it.
Maybe they have to get their attention. What do you think?
Well, twenty-five is reasonable, I don't, I don't know that we wanna go into the business of buying tarps and distributing.
Yeah.
I think we assess them for an uncovered load.
That's fair.
And, and that has to be made known, so, those people that are using, there's probably I don't know if there's a grace period or there's something to raise public awareness.
There's thirty days, um, this, this ordinance will take effect in thirty days, and we can, or the board can direct administration to make known that, um, we can increase the fees for uncovered loads to make up.
And is there signage at the, at the transfer station?
I could, I could tell you, I mean, I'm.
There is at the city one, that's the one I use, I can tell you, the one at Williamsburg, there is.
And so in section ten, then, after the twenty-five dollars, I remove reference that it would not be taken out of their electronic debit card, but instead it would be assessed by the attendant. Um, transfer station availability, I think that stays the same, dumpster rentals, um, do we do that, Amber, we have dumpsters that are available for rent?
No.
We don't have any dumpsters.
So then we should probably remove that section. And we don't anticipate doing that in the near future, correct? Uh, section twelve, administration, that, that part's all fine. Section, um, fourteen, that's the area you're concerned about, Commissioner Jones, uh, so we can take that off.
So, I don't think you wanna let them off the hook either, because if they're at a site that's gonna produce construction waste, then I think there needs to be language in there that there's required to have, does that make sense?
Yes.
I, but if you're remodeling the elec- electrical system, you probably don't need a dumpster. Right? But, uh, it could, can that language just be shortened to say that, that it, if issued a building permit on a construction site where C D is gonna be generated, that a dumpster is required?
Yes, sir. I will redo that in a second.
Because that's also a big problem too, and they did, we need to get to that one. Hey, you guys got us.
Do we need to go on and come back some?
No, 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 let, let, let me, let me give you what I have and we can kinda work through the language, let's kinda go line by line.
Okay.
Uh, any person who has a secured state building permit for work that will be, that will generate solid waste or construction or demolition debris shall before beginning any construction activity in the county enter into a contract with the county or the solid waste franchisee. We probably wanna take out reference to solid waste franchisees, it's assessed on our foreseeable future. Unplacement of the owner of the property. If the permit or the nature of the work indicates the construction demolition debris will be generated, dumpster or similar container shall be required. A person may alternatively provide a fenced area suitable as a design that's capable of containing all solid waste and C and D debris so that it may be disturbed or removed from the premises or property by wind or elements. Uh, no person generating solid waste or C and D debris shall allow solid waste to be blown or. Well, we already have that in another section, so we, oh, but it wasn't referenced, hence C and D debris.
Right.
Okay, so that, that stays then too, shall allow solid waste or lot to be blown or carried by the elements. Any person engaged in construction demolition shall remove all solid waste refuse, blah blah blah, including structural parts from a construction site that contains their elements from scattering the matter set out in section ten point two. All C and D debris and solid waste should be removed and disposed of within five days of completion, then approve solid waste or C and D debris facility. Any person hauling solid waste refuse, household waste or C and D debris shall haul such material only in covered or enclosed vehicle. Is that good?
Yeah, so all you have to do is change that one word. Aside where C D is generated.
Okay, got it.
Perfect.
Copy. And I apologize for taking the board's time to go through it today, but
No, I thought we did.
we, we advertised it and the public had enough to, you know, appear and, and also online, and we wanna make sure we attend to it.
I think you just look at these pictures and you hear their stories.
Oh, yes.
You know? I, I would, I would want to look there.
Well, we, we do have enforcement in section eighteen penalties and section nineteen prosecution. So, if this is a recurring problem and doesn't get fixed, Sheriff, I think there's a point that, that you can take action and do more than issue a citation.
Step one, step two, and step three?
Yeah, a criminal complaint.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, I'm, I'm looking through it right now, just to make sure, I wanted to make sure yeah, person shall not exceed three hundred dollars, and we have all that, plus we have the, uh, civil enforcement where the county can go in and clean it up. One thing that, uh, I do wanna bring to the board's attention is like Attorney Pato said, is that the junk parts and vehicles does fall under the refuse now. Um, uh, again, I guess I'm gonna kinda plead to the board for some direction there of, of I, I don't like the, the subjectiveness to it from one person to another. Um, what, what standards would we like there or would we not like there as far as enforcement goes?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I tend to address that, I, I would tend to think that we best our officers' discretion in, in, in many different instances in arrest, in, in, in cases, and, in a million different ways, and I think that, that the guidance that this board has previously given was that, you know, we need to be sensitive about one person's trash to another person's treasure. Um, but, but again, if there's a rollover vehicle that's clearly not rehabilitatable and junk that's sitting in someone's yard, then clearly that's junk. And I mean, if you believe, or your officers believe that a, the, that, um, Judge Lee would also agree that that's junk, then I think it's fair to cite them and, and, and bring that forward, and then we can, we can test it. Um, I think ultimately that gets reviewed, you know, initially that determination's made by your officers, but then ultimately reviewed by Judge Lee. So I think we're, we have coverage there, but I think that there should be some, some sensitivity that we don't want them going and collecting people's old cars, you know, and calling that junk.
No, I agree, but I think one thing we're looking at is, uh, like, we talked earlier, the motors are leaking oil and, I mean, fluid or fluids, or, and a lot of these abandoned cars are perfect for pack rats. And I mean, they carry all sorts of shit diseases and, you know, I, to me, little common sense goes a long way. You look in this car and see pack rat, and you, you know they're not using it for anything, so to me, that would be considered trash. I think, but, that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've, I've made that correction to section fourteen, um, and I don't believe there were any other sections looking through this that required, unless the commissioners have any changes, um, that I heard, or provisions relating to.
So I, I gotta make one last, I promised I wouldn't.
Go ahead, please, please.
If we, if we kick that fine that we're, we're, we suggested, well, could that reverse this and people say, huh, I don't have a tarp, I'm gonna dump it over here? Could, could that backfire on us?
You say it absolutely, absolutely good.
I'd like us to think about that too before we.
I, I really, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I really like the tarp idea, I know we don't wanna get in the business of selling tarps, but if people are coming to us with unsecured loads, we need to help them to correct that situation. And maybe one of those reasons why they're coming to us with an unsecured load is because they don't have a tarp. And so selling them a tarp, it justifies the cost that we're imposing upon them, it's not like an additional tax or penalty. We're just simply saying, you know what, you need this, in order to transport to us, you need this, and it keeps, keeps a road safer. And I think that's, that's my recommendation, but you all decide what you'd like to do with that fine.
A tarp's no good without a rope and someplace to tie it down.
And sell rope too.
Gosh, we're not selling rope, we're not, we're not getting told that, but.
Yeah. It'd be a good place to get rid of it.
I would.
I think we better rethink the fine, I, I, I thought it could be doubled the dump fee or something. If you come in, you just double the dump fee and.
So I should just list it as that double the dump fee?
Yeah, what do you think, I mean, I, I'm, I'm really worried that somebody will look at that and will say, ah, I'd, I'd rather try to let the sheriff catch me than.
I'd like to have your firm number, like, I mean, I, I would rather, I mean, I, because every dump fee is gonna be different, right? I mean, I, I'd like to have a firm number.
What is the average dump fee?
I'm not sure. Josh, do you have any, do you have any idea what the average dump fee is out at one of our transfer stations?
Oh, for the day?
Uh, for an individual?
Oh, for an individual, it probably runs about six bucks.
Twelve dollars.
Yeah, Williamsburg, it's eleven dollar minimum now.
Yeah.
So twelve dollar fee? That work?
Well, they're there, you can collect it then.
Yep.
Yeah.
Twelve dollars?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Good round number.
Okay, any, any other discussion, gentlemen? With the changes made, is there a motion?
I mean, okay, I'll move to the doctor, the ordinance is rewritten.
With, with the changes made incorporated.
I second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 And if it, and if it backfires, if it backfires, it would be a Hockman's amendment.
Approved, we got through that one. I hope that, uh, item G, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six, the road infrastructure placement ordinance, Manager Wong, County Payville, and Josh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm actually emailing the last one off for print real fast, though.
Yeah.
So, um, you had a public hearing, I provided an explanation for the basis for the infrastructure road placement ordinance, we had folks recently that have come to us. Um, that's actually not what precipitated it, but it, it came actually in the context of our, um, consideration and, and direction for, for adoption. Um, many counties have these road replacement ordinances, it ensures that our roads are maintained and restored back to the condition they were in um, prior to the work conducted by those folks, so, um, I stand for any motions, the board.
Love me.
Go ahead. Commissioner Jones?
Hate me before you love me. Um, so, one of the things that I have in here with, in this, with all due respect to the, to our, our county road superintendents and our, and our guys, one of the things that concerns me is diluting the authority of, of the, of the county manager. I, in this, in this, it looks like the, the issuers of. in this in this, it looks like the the issuers of issuance of the permits and the discretion of of how the road is fixed lies strictly with the road superintendent. I I while I while I think they're the expert, I also think that the county manager may have the whole picture in mind. And that if there's an issue, I think the county manager would be more sensitive to um heading off, maybe an appeal or sue or or something like that. So the first thing I'd like to see is if we could just have if if the superintendent reviewed it, the county manager actually signs a permit or approves it is uh and and again, this is with a hundred percent respect to the road superintendents, cause they're the they're they're the experts.
Are you on section one authority?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jones, I would propose that first change to section one to to provide subject to approval of the county manager, the county road superintendent has the authority and power necessary, blah blah. Then we'll need to do that also the second sentence.
If if that's agreeable with the other guides, I just I I I worry about a change in the in the I mean, obviously, county manager has the the vision of the commission. My change of vote superintendent, something might happen. I just think that would be, I think that would say.
So as a scenario, the uh road market would take the application and and delineate uh any needed requirements and then submit for approval, recommend approval, and the county manager would actually approve.
Exactly.
So then I'd make those changes to the first section. If you scroll down to section three, appeals, it provides that a person who's agreed by decision with a county road superintendent approving or disapproving a road utility permit. So again, should I should I change that there to the county manager since the manager will ultimately be excommunicated?
I think so.
As the deciding official.
Okay. Gotcha.
Or designate however county manager designate.
And section five enforcement.
I'm I'm not even out of section three yet, Commissioner, sorry.
We got the.
Okay, now I'm in section five.
I'm gonna bring you back to one of them.
So do we want do we want the county road superintendent or manager to enforce the provisions of the ordinance?
County manager.
Well, the county manager doesn't have the technical expertise to provisions of
Um okay.
of what's happening on the road with that infrastructure, so it ties into the county.
Agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make it the county manager designate so that way she could have the road superintendent go in there if she wanted to.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, I guess.
And that language is in there.
In five two.
Mm-hmm.
That's for criminal prosecution and civil remedies. So I think in five one, you could say the county manager or his or her designate.
Okay. Okay, got it? Scrolling down to six, seven, eight. Okay, Commissioner Jones, is there any additional questions?
Change in signatures.
Oh, that's right, yes. I'm gonna do that in a second.
Anything else?
At two places, there there was a place where it said a minimum depth, excavation depth of two feet. Twenty four, yeah.
Section two.
Yes, sir, two point two.
Section five point five.
Two part five, yeah. Um. So that should be per code, uh per state and federal code. And the reason I say that, if they come in and put a high high um voltage line in and you say it's gotta be twenty four inches, it violates the code. I don't think anybody would do it. Uh I mean, the responsible utility might not do it, but just just make it per U Mexico code, state and federal code, I guess, utility.
So so how about this? Applicant agrees to bury any cable or other infrastructure, minimum depth twenty four inches and in accordance with state and federal code. So you have that initial barrier. I I I'm not sure, I'm not familiar enough with state and federal code as it relates to the burial depth to speak to whether or not some are twelve inches or some are thirty six inches. So if we establish the minimum twenty four, they have to get at least two feet. And then if code requires further than twenty four.
I can live with that. And then on the on the traffic control, that's I think in two, three. And we're I think the re redoing the road fine. The traffic control, if I think should we can leave language in there that they need to leave a minimum of lane open. But I think that we should just go back and refer to the M U T D C, the Uniform Ma uh Traffic Control Devices.
Okay.
That they comply with that. In that a way, we don't have a, you know, maybe Amber's busy one day and Josh says, I'll just put a barrel up there and then somebody wrecked. We in my experience is we have a lot of claims with traffic control accidents.
Got it.
Scraping their car up. And I think if we just throw them back to the the traffic uh traffic control devices manual, which is approved statewide na nationally, then then it happened.
Uh-huh. So M T T T C?
M U T D C.
M U T D C.
Mm-hmm.
So in addition to that, section two point four to provide that applicant for their agrees to comply with their permits, the M U T D C.
Yeah, so we're yeah, we're leaving uh one lane open and then um oh, uh actually, there is something else. I think state law requires uh if 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 there's a road closure, that school buses be notified.
By now?
So if you can put language in there that that adds to that. We know that's been a problem.
Commissioners, if I might, if we also have anybody who's trying to close down a road, that it has to be approved by the commission.
For for an interruption, perfect. And you're okay with the Vaughn requirement a as a discretion?
So if we could quickly go back to that item about the um notification to the schools, is that gonna go back to section two point three and we wanna reference? I wasn't able to find a statutory requirement for that, but just in a two second search. Um but I'd like to incorporate it somehow that they'll provide notice to the schools, to the to the tier C dependent school system, right? I mean, regarding enclosures.
Yeah.
I think we can we can include whether or not it's a requirement or not. I mean, I think that's a fair thing to do.
Yeah, in in the event of a road closure, the uh the contractor or the permittee will notify
Tier C.
Tier C school district of closing. It just affects the bus routes. I'm done, Jim.
Okay. With the with the with the changes identified, is there a motion to approve?
Don't move. That's it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, we'll go to H. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven, regulating unmanned aircraft systems. Sheriff?
Exactly.
It's a huge problem in Firefly, yeah. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh you you you've heard from the public before, uh and from the sheriff and myself regarding the substance of this ordinance, and I stand for any questions to the board.
Also, I spoke whenever we had the public hearing and I'll stand for any questions the board can have.
Can I answer questions, gentlemen?
I'll keep mine short. Sheriff, I'm at Spaceport. I'm parked on the county road and I wanna fly my construction project. And I launch from a county road, am I in violation of this ordinance?
If you don't get a permit and request permission, technically, yes.
And how much is the permit?
I don't believe there is a fee. It's basically just so that we can do just that. You're flying it for a lawful purpose and and a reasonable purpose versus um you're launching from, say, the fairgrounds or from the parking lot out here and interfering with what's going on or flying into our radio towers.
Isn't it a hundred dollar fee? Violations three hundred.
No, the fee is the section six penalties.
Does not exceed three hundred dollars, eh? Well, I I'll make mine easy so we don't deliver. I I'm not gonna support this e- either way. I I just I think it gets burdensome if you're out there, a farmer wanting to fly his field and you gotta come in and get a permit from the county. We're after the people who are interfering with things. The FAA has regulations, we all have regulations, and I think it's just another one you can't enforce. I can get my drone out of there before you can figure out where it is. And that, so anyway, I I'm not gonna support it either way.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to pass? Here in none, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven dies for lawful motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. We've got the one item in executive session according to section ten through fifteen, E through H, having to do with a real estate question about fifty Ranch El Dorado. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, we go into executive session, section ten through fifteen, E through H.
Is there a second?
Check it.
Um Theresa, would you do a roll call vote, please?
It's gonna be commissioners?
Yes.
All right, um Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. We are in executive session.
Twenty two.
Okay.